Well, call to order this meeting of the Board of Selectmen. First item is to confirm the future meeting dates. We're scheduled to meet Thursday, March 8th and Thursday, March 22nd, both times at 6:30. That's still good with...
Fine with me.
Those will... Meeting dates are now confirmed. Citizens speak. Is there any citizen that wishes to address the board? No.
They were all here at 8 o'clock, but they left because it was so late starting.
That's right.
Because one of us was so late.
I can't imagine who that might be.
Next item is consolidated facilities appointments.
Since I was late, I'll read them. Go ahead.
I was just going to give an overview. And this is two positions that the Board of Selectmen are being asked to approve in the new consolidated facilities department. Both these individuals are currently working for the town and the school department. Originally, these jobs, these are union position jobs in the town DPW union. Nobody in the DPW union applied. I spoke to the superintendent and I spoke to the union on the DPW side and the union on the school side, and they felt it was okay to post these in. So, these would be like lateral transfers, if you will.
Is the school department not going to fill them on their side?
I don't have that answer. I have to check on that.
Okay. It'd be nice if that could happen, but...
Yeah, which then leads to the question, does the move mean that there's additional personnel? Or would be additional personnel?
Well, it probably does in the sense that these were open positions in... These DPW or the consolidated facilities?
These will be, if approved by the Board of Selectmen, will be consolidated facilities.
But these were the two positions that were moved from...
From the DPW, yes.
So, the budget authority is already there for them. So, it wouldn't be like it's new dollars?
No, there's no new dollars here. It's only a... Basically, a transfer of two individuals working for one town department to another town department if approved. And these positions were already approved at the special town meeting for funding.
With a goal to kind of eventually get...
A whole...
Everybody under one umbrella. It'd be nice not to see them replaced if that was possible.
Right.
Okay, then. Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the appointments of David Hawes to the position of W4 maintenance craftsman and James Curley to the position of W3 maintenance man in the consolidated facilities department contingent and effective upon the approval by the personnel board.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Next item is the town clerk interim appointment. And before we raise that issue, I just feel that the Board should recognize the long term of service of James G. Mullen, who spent 36 years as the Milton Town Clerk. Prior to that, he served on the Milton School Committee. At the age of 21, I believe, he was the youngest elected school committee member in the state. I'll never forget when I was at a town meeting and I thought it was the beginning of his rise to political popularity. At the Milton Town Meeting, one of the elder statements, who was a good orator, put Mr. Mullen down by referring to him as Master Mullen. And I'll never forget when James G. Mullen Jr. stood up and let everybody know that he was Master Mullen. And I think that was when he's... That's him. And he also was a long-term member of the Board of Selectmen. I think all three current selectmen are very familiar with him, appreciate his years of dedicated service to the town.
That's... Yeah, good. That's another state that probably, yeah, Jim has given a lot to the town, a lot more than most of us can imagine. And a good friend.
Well, I think... I think there's a silent majority of people out there that, you know, over the years, this is 40 years that he's been in town government, but the number of people that he's helped behind the scenes that I know of is... It's a large number of people. It's a huge amount of people. And, I mean, I... His father and my father were best friends growing up. Our families go back a long way. I wish him well. I hope... I hope he's made the right decision. I tried to talk him out of it. I think you guys did too. At least, that's what I heard. You know, but he's at... He's making some changes in his life. He's at a kind of a crossroads with a number of things. And, you know, I just hope he's... He finds, you know, some contentment with this change he's making. And that's what we all want. And, you know, Jimmy's... Jimmy's had some changes in his life recently and we just... I think that everybody in town just wishes him the best, you know?
That's true.
We're certainly going to miss him here in the town hall. And, I mean, I've spoken to him more since Friday, I think, than I did when we were selectmen together. You know, so he's... He's still with it. He's still giving me a lot of crap.
And he's done some non-political things with me that I'm forever grateful to. As an example, each year for the past 20 years, my Learn to Skate with its 200 children has had Jimmy as Santa.
Right.
And he's just been wonderful. And with the Learn to Skate kids, I have them tape... I hope none of them are watching. I have them tape their name on their helmet. So, when Santa comes, they are absolutely amazed that Santa knows them by their first name. That's how smart Mr. Mullen was.
No, we wish him the luck, all the luck in the world. I think pursuant to that, pursuant to Chapter 41, Section 14 of Mass. General Law, to approve the appointment of Frederick C. Frithson, who seems like a really great guy, who was a former town clerk in Rockland... I know Rockport. To assist the town upon the retirement of Town Clerk James G. Mullen Jr. at the current rate of compensation received by the former town clerk, $15.92-30 a week plus $75 each month as a member of the Board of Registrar Voters for the period of February 27, 2012 to April 30, 2012.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Well, except that this will cover the election, actually, the Tuesday... Next Tuesday's election, the presidential primary and the town municipal election. And at that election, someone will be elected to carry on.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
And Mr. Jim and Mr. Mullen will, because he's still, you know, still the town clerk until the end of this week, will swear in the interim tomorrow morning.
Sounds good. All right. Next item is the assistant registrar appointment.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Dr. Kevin P. Donoghue, 84 Center Lane, to the Board of Registars to fill the vacancy created by the retirement of Mary Elizabeth Brown to serve through May 2013.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion?
I would just add that it might be appropriate for us to send a letter of thanks to Betty Brown for her service as a registrar.
I think that'd be an excellent idea, and she's a former employee and...
Yeah.
Been a registrar for a number of years and been a wonderful person.
Absolutely. And a good friend to everyone.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Next is discussion of the town meeting location.
Mr. Chairman and the Board, you may have seen an earlier email from the 350th Anniversary Committee. They had done a little research and somewhere along the line had discovered information that town meeting, or the first few town meetings, or a number of town meetings for that matter, were held at the First Parish Church. And they were wondering if it would be a good idea if, for this annual town meeting, I think the first day is Monday, May 7th, could be held at the First Parish Church. As this Board knows, that comes under the moderator's responsibility, the location, and whether or not it's suitable for holding a town meeting. Brian Walsh had asked me to do a site walk within this past Saturday at the First Parish Church, which we did with the approval of, you know, the parish. And it does seem to be suitable for at least one night of town meeting. It would be probably, if it's okay with this Board to approve that site, it would be held just like a small first night meeting. In other words, it only runs until about 9:00, 9:30. We would kind of rearrange the articles a little bit so that they're, you know, it's big enough to hold all the town meeting members and a few other people, but it's probably not big enough to hold all your department heads and a number of other people. So, the agenda would be, if it's approved, would be, you know, some of the articles at pretty boilerplates and maybe have a little ceremony in recognition of the 350th anniversary. And we'll kind of work all those details and logistics. It will be live television. I did talk with the MPAG folks and they can run a live telephone or electric line into there, so we'll have live television. We'll have to work out the details, but it seemed like a nice idea and looking for the Board's support on this.
For the Boards to be in session, would they meet here?
We have to work that out. They could probably meet here. We would probably, the first night, we'd probably have it so that the Boards, if they wanted to meet, could meet the second night. That's a regular high school. But the first night, again, most of the items, there'd be enough room for the warrant committee at the front of the church, the Board of Selectmen with their table, the moderator and the clerk to record the minutes. That's about all there is, is in the front of the church, if you haven't been over there. And then there's all the pew, which will hold all the town meeting members. And we will send out a notice, again, if it's approved by this selectman, we will send out a notice to the town meeting members informing them that the first night of town meeting will be at the First Parish Church.
I think it's a great idea.
I think legally, don't you have to put... Even though it's one night with a different address, don't you have to put it on the warrant that goes into the home?
Yes, we're working on that, how that's going to legally be. But that will all be noted as we go forward. So, if the Boards are good with the location, the town moderator's good with the location, we'll work out all the logistical stuff to include notifications.
And I saw Brian's email, saying there's no problem with the location, so...
You were at that first one when they had it.
Well, I was going to ask you, where was the location when there was also people upstairs?
That was here.
That was the old town hall. They had the balcony over the old town hall. I actually sat in that balcony for a town meeting at one point when I was a little kid. My father brought me to my first town meeting.
Oh, okay. So, that was here?
That was in the red brick town hall, the old one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, remember that they had the balcony up over...
I just remember something about... The meeting was here, but the people could be watching from up top.
Yeah, I remember being in it years ago, but yeah.
They only opened up... I think they only opened up that upstairs part for town meeting.
Could be, yeah.
But it was an annual town meeting on Saturday, so you did all the articles in one day. It wasn't like at night.
They started at 1:00 and...
How they wore you down by...
By 5:00, that's when you got the real heavyweights articles.
Really business done.
Yeah.
So, if the Board's okay with that?
I'm fine with that. Do we have to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the first night.
I'll make a motion to approve the location for the first night of town meeting to be at the First Parish Church.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I just want to comment that that committee is doing a great job coming up with something like this.
And I also want to recognize the church and the church leadership for allowing us the use of the facility.
Town administrators report.
Just have one item. Mr. Chairman, you had asked me today, and I just want to give the Board some information about the... I think there were a couple of emails regarding the Ullin Rink and upcoming season, not that this year is over yet, but next season is fast approaching, and what's the status of that legislation that would allow the town the possibility of entering into a long-term lease? And the person I've been dealing with is a warrant Madden, and he works for the Division of Capital Asset and Management. DCAM is the state agency's nickname. And he's away until Monday, so I was unable to talk with him directly. But the question came up on the... The users are all getting ready for next season and wanted to know what the rates would be, if there's any changes, any changes in the hours. And that question, I think, is still unanswered until the next meeting of the Board, which will be next Thursday. I should be able to give you an update. But as I understand it, from early discussions with Mr. Madden, is that DCR has owned that property for a long time, and it was DCR that entered into the permit with the town of Milton for five years. Subsequent to that, there's now legislation which was signed by the governor that allows the town first right of refusal on a 25-year lease. When that occurred, again, as I understand it, it shifts from DCR to DCAM, that the responsibility then shifts to the Department of Asset Management to handle the lease portion.
Negotiation.
So, they would end up doing an RFP. The town, again, has first right of refusal, so the selectman can make a decision when that RFP comes out, whether they want to apply for that lease. Once you have the lease, then you'd probably turn around and do another RFP. The Board of Selectmen would do an RFP to see who's interested in managing it for 25 years.
Well, no, you wouldn't. Would you really put out the management for 25 years?
Well, you could up to 25 years, is the way the legislation was, and that's what town meeting authorized the Board of Selectmen.
Well, yeah, that's the lease agreement, but you wouldn't want to put the management out there 25 years, would you?
Well, that's up to the... Well, first, you got to... First, you got to take the lease, and then you got to decide how you want to do it.
It's a practical problem. Okay.
You're going to have to do an RFP at some point to see who's going to manage it. Then you have to enter a contract with whoever you select to manage.
Right.
It's going to have to be fairly lengthy, because you're going to have the same problem of if you're going to ask that management agent to invest capital funds, and you're still going to want them to be assured of enough time to amortize those capital expenditures, the same way. So, if we were to go out and have a 25-year lease, and then, well, the Curry, you only get up to three, they're going to have the same problem that they had before in terms of...
Well, I mean, the thing is, any long-term capital expenditure, you're going to have to... It's going to be the less E, that's not the manager, it's the less E that's on it, that has to apply for...
Well, I'm talking about if the way that Curry has invested money in the rink now, if we're going to expect that to continue, then they, I think, need some time to recover that investment. So, I think that's a practical problem.
But it's written into our agreement with Curry that if we were to go out to bid with a management contract and for some reason Curry was not to get...
They'd have to be reimbursed.
They'd have to be reimbursed for the capital that they put into it now.
Yeah, Curry's committed to $145,000 for the first year of capital improvements and $20,000 for each of the next two years, with what you just said. If for any reason somebody else took over, Curry would have to be reimbursed for the expenditure they made, because that's what they negotiated with us, which is reasonable. You can't blame them for wanting to try to recover some of their investment if it went to somebody else. What I think we need to be concerned about is what about the short-term situation right now? Curry needs to really, in terms of its own budget, needs to be figuring out numbers for next year. All your users, right now, have to figure out what their numbers are for next year in terms of... You take the youth hockey, for instance, all its programs, they're now going to be trying to figure out how much money the participants' parents are going to have to pay. In order to figure out that money, you need to be able to project in there what your ice costs are going to be. Under the current rules that we've been operating, this has been the DCR's position, that the DCR says that they are to review and approve all rate increases, that rate increases are allowed, but that they must be reasonable in order to protect the public purpose of the rink.
Right.
So, short-term, I'm hoping that the town administrator can get some information that would enable us to think about next year as we're also thinking about what we're going to do in terms of the long-term lease and what number. And that has to be figured out. We know we can go up to 25.
Right.
What's the best number that should be in the best interest of the town?
Yeah, you saw the email from Peter Filoni that I answered?
Yeah.
And... Did you see it too?
I did see it, yes.
All right. Well, here's the thing. We're going into these negotiations with the state, this DCAM, okay? It's a 25-year lease at a dollar a year. That's going to be the RFP. You know, we have right of first refusal. However, I think we're going to get into a negotiation process on, you know, the dispensation of the capital as, you know, how capital needs are, who's responsible for what capital. I mean, DCR had something under the permit, but they're going to want to try to, you know, exoner themselves...
Of everything.
Of everything. And we're going to have to come back and say, no, wait a minute. Hold on. This is what... This is what... We're not going to... It's your building. If the roof goes, you're responsible. You know, I do think that Curry has done a great job, because, you know, you know better than me, Bob, but as you... You know, I've seen you at the rink at those games where I know the record.
What's the record?
It's 16, 3, and 2.
Thank you.
Okay? But that east ceiling, you know, Tommy McCarthy, the park commissioner works down there at night, he was telling me that the second generator thing that they have has only been turned on once all winter. He said that's a tremendous savings. Tom knows this stuff.
Yeah.
And he said that that east ceiling is working perfectly. So, you know, I think we're moving towards at least breaking even. What we want to try to do, we have to keep in mind of what we're all about here. The Board of Marion McGetrick and Kathy Fagan and myself stepped into this thing because Milton Youth Hockey asked us to kind of protect them, and we're still trying to do that. We've got to try to keep the hockey players' expenses as low as possible, but yet not lose money so that we're going to the town meeting for money, because we'll get killed.
Right, it's got to be revenue neutral.
So, you know, that's... It's a tricky thing, but that's why I answered Peter the way I did, because we don't know what this capital thing is. And we don't know... We have to get a report from Curry about the current status and what we lost this year. They identified us for up to $400,000 in operating losses over the first three years. But we're coming up to the edge of that period now. I mean, this next year is our third year.
I get a little bit concerned when I hear that DCR is sort of moving lateral over towards the DCAM. And I get concerned, because I want to make sure that everybody knows the rules.
Right.
I know the rules we've been playing by, reasonable rate increases are allowed, whether it's permit or lease, this kind of thing. I don't want to get hit cold with some new kind of rule, like you're talking about capital expenses.
Right.
If you need major repairs, then the way it is right now, we're looking to the state because it's their building.
That's right.
Depends what it is, but yeah.
And we're already paying for it with our state tax dollars.
Right.
And, you know, I don't think we should lose sight of that either.
Well, you're right. And we have a couple of things going for us. The governor lives in the town. This is the governor's department. You know, we have a fairly active... I disagree with what Senator Joy said at the town meeting, but we have a fairly active legislative delegation, and they can help us with this. I think they know what the score is. In the end, it's not our building. I, you know, I think you agree with me, and I hope you agree with Bob and I. I know Bob said it in the past. I mean, this rink was built with all of our money and should not be privatized, and that's why we're stepping in... We stepped into it, because if it...
Right. The best possibility of this staying is, cost affordable as possible, is for the town to run it.
To do it the way we want.
But it's got to be revenue neutral. It can't cost the town any money, and that's...
That... I'm glad you said that. That's how I kind of feel.
Right.
Revenue neutral. I've heard people talk about, oh, the rink can make a profit.
No, no.
Not from my experience.
Right, no, it should.
Whether it be the bowling alleys, there was a fad where everybody built a bowling alley, then there was fads where everybody was building skating rinks. From my knowledge of skating rinks, whether it's the former Nick Abraham's Rink in Walpole, the Waymus Skating Club, or Ridge Arena, they went... They changed. They all became different entities. It could be, like, out at the Walpole right now, it could be a Walgreens there.
Right.
Ridge Arena is a bunch of condos.
It's just those kinds of sightings sort of prove that the ice skating business is tough to make money in.
Oh, it definitely is.
Because your revenue, for the most part, is coming on your hourly rate charge. You can pick up revenues in some other ways, but for the most part, it's hourly rates. And then, for the most part, there's, like, there's peak hours. There isn't that demand on a Monday through Friday.
Plus, plus a peak season. You've got November to May or November, April.
It isn't there.
Yeah.
The money's not there to be made in certain hours. So, that... But what I do believe is, I think it's that a rink can be at least self-sufficient, so that you can pay your bills with your revenue.
Right.
And I think, like, right now, in the past few years, we've been heading in that direction. We've seen a tremendous decrease in the expenditures in terms of, like, cost efficiency. When the state had it, there was wasted electricity 24 hours a day.
Yeah, and Mike O'Toole kept telling us that, you know, Toolsy. And he had a way, and he's done that down at the Shea Rink. The thing is, I think you're right. You're 100% right. The fact that the state was losing over $350,000 a year in running that rink is a complete disgrace. And, you know, just, at least if we have it, we're on top of it, and we're on top of the costs. It's... I want to just say that, you know, I mean, President Quigley has told me at Curry that, you know, this is a major undertaking. This is taking up a lot more time of his staff than he thought. Curry has really done a magnificent job, I mean, because they're taking up the slack of complete laziness for 15 years and, you know, trying to get, make something of it. And I think, everybody I've talked to at these games has said, you know, jeez, it looks much better.
Yeah, the more it's an attractive place, it's just going to attract more people. And we do want to make sure that, you know, that Milton gets its fair share of ice time and it gets it at a reasonable rate, and but...
But into that, I mean, I think you're right. We're lucky, you know, we're not Ridge Arena and all that, but we have... I think we have built-in customers.
Yes.
In Curry, in Milton Youth Hockey, in Milton High, that we can work with...
Right.
To kind of get where we want... They have that Commonwealth skating, and there's other people involved, but those are the three main ones, the main users, you know?
Right.
So...
I'll report out, Mr. Chairman, at your next meeting. I should be in touch with Mr. Madden by then, and I'll have a better update.
Good. Are we awaiting a report from Curry on the present year's...
We had one report. I don't know if the...
Yeah.
Couple of months old now, so I forget. I'll have to go back and look. There'll be another report forthcoming.
Okay.
And the DCR, I think, had 60 days, and you'll see by the heading of this letter, it was dated December 15th, so the 60 days have come and gone now. So, we should be hearing from DCAM much... A lot more information should be coming out now.
After this guy comes back from vacation.
Right. I don't know if he's on vacation. He's just now in the office to London, that's all I... Sheen said.
All right.
That's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman's report. I just basically discussed what I was going to discuss, so we discussed the rink, nothing else to report. New business? Mr. Shields?
Do we know when the last time we put the ambulance contract out to bid?
I'm going to say last.
I don't think it's been while your town administrator, because it hasn't been while I'm a selectman, I don't think.
I think they had it with... That's... I think we went out for a five-year, and I have to go back and look.
Okay. Okay.
But I thought we did go out a couple of years ago, or extended it for a year or two. I can report that out.
I'll tell you why. An older gentleman stopped me the other, told me the other day that he had a relative that took an ambulance trip from Winter Valley to the hospital, and it cost $1,400 bucks. And I got to tell you, when I heard that, I just said, well, wait a minute, that's a little bit. I'd just like to review.
Yeah, those rates aren't set by the contract with the town and the ambulance company.
Right, but sometimes.
Those are set by DPU or.
Sometimes, if you put something out to bid, the costs, you know, costs are reduced. I mean, I just, I just think that, that, to me, is prohibitive.
Yeah, because I think the only time is if you call 911 for an ambulance, that's the time.
This was a Winter Valley call, it wasn't a 911 call.
Then it'll be just private.
That's a private transfer.
According to him, you know. And I just thought that, you know, elderly people dealing with $1,400 bills to transfer somebody a few blocks is, just seems exorbitant to me. And if we can review the contract and just see what we can do, I just, I think that's a lot of money, you know.
Okay. I can report that.
Any further new business?
Yeah, just something I want to bring up. I was at the Tucker Neighborhood, that's why I was late getting here, because I was at the Tucker Neighborhood Association meeting, and they did bring up one thing of concern to them, and I wasn't sure of the answer. We knew there was a typo in the town warrant that went out for May 6, in the terms of the precincts and the voting locations, that the town clerk sent out a notice of, is it Precinct 11 or 9?
The new precinct, 11.
Okay.
There is no new precinct 11, there's only 10.
Yeah, the old precinct.
Precinct 11, and the new precinct 10 or?
It was a Cunningham Hall location.
Yes, in Cunningham Hall.
It used to be the Tucker School, and now it's going to Cunningham Hall.
Right. And it was concerned that the only place that that was being published in terms of the change or the error was in the paper, and they were concerned that residents would not see it.
The town clerk did send out a notice to every registered voter individually, because they all came, yeah, because my kids still vote out of my house, and they always see the postcard telling them of.
Right. And that's what created the original confusion.
Of the new location. We have published it on the town website, it's been published in the local newspaper, it'll be published again. If anybody has any questions, they need to just, you know, contact the town clerk's office, look at the website.
They'd ask for perhaps a reverse 911?
Yeah, we can look into the reverse 911.
Because they were concerned because of the fact that the postcard went out and was really the start of the confusion, because you had a postcard saying one thing, and that people would just still be confused.
Well, we might have time to do that for the Tuesday election, the presidential primary, just as a warm-up for the municipal election.
Yeah.
Well, that's what shot, Bob, getting the information out before the primary.
Yes.
Okay.
Any old business? No old business. I'll make a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of conducting strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, believing that having these discussions in open session would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining, litigating position of the body, and return to open session only for the purpose of adjournment.
Second.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Mr. Shields?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.